All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the January meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corker and I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits. For consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum tonight. It looks like we have five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed, but let's do roll call first, just to make sure. Mario DeFolvio is not here. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judge. Thank you. Kelly Weiss. Manny Priest is not going to be here tonight, and we have a new member tonight, Steve Cipresson. All right. Welcome, Steve. All right. Second item on our agenda is the approval of last month's minutes. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Revisions? Based on the meeting minutes that were posted? And if not, is there a motion to approve? All right, motion by Kelly. Second by Joe, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right. Next item on the agenda are seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all our applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. So tonight, our first seeker determination. Is for the applicant Damian J. Cornwell, and the project address is seventy-five Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business. Commercial tenant space in the C two downtown business district. Welcome. Good. Yes, if you push it, there should be a light. Lights up.
Oh, there it is.
How are you? Hi, there.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So what are you guys thinking about doing?
So in July of twenty twenty-one, we opened up a CBD retail. Store with our cannabinoid hemp retail license as granted by the state. And in September of twenty twenty-two. We submitted our application and were awarded later in November, one of the first retail. Card retail licenses for the sale of cannabis. In the state. We partnered with the Urban League. This is Jen Lesko. She's director of the Broom County Urban League. It's one of the nonprofit qualifying entities. So that we can do some philanthropic work with some of the revenues that we generate. And I'm here tonight because this will be the first time that cannabis legally is sold in the city of Binghamton and. Wanted to go through this process and dot every i and cross every t in terms of the legalities and talk to you folks.
All right. From a review process, this recently we revised or approved the revisions to the code. This all meets all those requirements or anything that was in that revision?
Yes, yeah, the main thing being that the applicant has to be already licensed by New York State, which which they are. All right. And so they meet all other requirements in the zoning code that apply.
All right. Do you mind if I ask, what's the review process like getting your license?
Oh, my heavens. How much time you got? That's a joke. It was pretty, pretty arduous. The biggest thing I think that was important is the state wants to make sure that they're clear and that there are. All true parties of interest are identified. I think the policy from a state perspective is to ensure that larger corporate actors can't take advantage of the licensing. And that they don't. Those actors don't come in and make the market so filled. That there's no area for people to actually get in, generate new wealth in new communities and pull themselves up. Which is why I love our model. I'm a little biased, but our model is dope. Right? Because we're positioned in a way where we can do good things and there's there's no, we're not beholden to anyone. Our whole goal is to generate more wealth. Create more jobs, do more training, do more things, and we have a history of doing a lot of workforce development in the town. So in terms of directly answer your question, there was, there was a lot of stuff we had to put together to prove that we were who we were. And I think it was pretty competitive. I think they had like nine hundred applications. And it was, it was scored like a, like a grant almost would be scored. So as you laid out your goals and your strategy and what you're looking to do and. You know. What you start with, that's how they determined whether or not you'd be one of the people that were selected. And by the grace of God, we were.
Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah. Are there other people in the area that are going to be doing this as well or?
Yes, there's another, there's a, what they call you guys a DASNY applicant. There's another DASNY applicant that did qualify. His name was Will Durham. I actually do know him. He qualified. So. There were two sides to it, right? There were folks that were justice involved, meaning that maybe it had like a, a prior, you know, justice impact. And then there were folks that had done social justice work with no justice impact, and that would be myself. I've gotten a lot of tickets, you know, parking tickets, but never any, never anything of that would raise the level of justice, justice impact. However, we do tons and tons of programming that helps most help needed populations and folks that have suffered, you know, justice impact.
All right. Fantastic. Anybody else have any questions or comments about the? Project, Chris?
This is not, this is for the app, this may be more for Greg and Tito and Corp Counsel. So. The applicants getting one of the licensed dispensaries for cannabis products. What's going to be the status of the? Oh, I don't know, two thousand storefronts in the city that are selling that don't have the applicant's licensing?
So we have a few options to address that. They can be reported to New York State. Which puts them on a list where basically they're, they're blacklisted in a way from getting a license in the future. We can address it through an illegal land use and cite them and take them to court and go through that process. And it could even be sort of a. A criminal investigation, like what happened in Johnson City where they actually seized the, the product from the illegal retailer. So we have different options right now. We're in the citing and taking to court. Process. And I believe we sent letters to the state as well. So we did those two things. I can't speak for what, you know, what the police department is doing. But we're doing what, what we can in our department to address it. And we've gotten. Fairly decent feedback from at least two of the known places that that they'll be shutting down soon. So we're working on it. Can I, can I add to that? Yeah, I think when this whole thing started, it was kind of a hot ball of wax and the state didn't really have a statute to add teeth to it. But I think as you know, it's kind of one of these things where they kind of put together the policy and the legislation so quickly. But now I think once you get through these first set of licenses, first the call threes came out. And then we'll do the retail and pretty soon there'll be processes. Then before you know it. I mean, it's definitely within their interest to stop those different revenue streams that are not being taxed. And that's the whole point. So I would have the full faith and confidence that. In terms of, in addition to what could be done at a local level in the municipality, I'm sure the state would be. Really putting all their, their strength and emphasis to make those things go away. Otherwise, the plan can't work. That's correct. Yeah, the state still doesn't have an enforcement sort of arm for OCM, but we expect that they will at some point, similar to how they enforce liquor licenses.
All right. Specific to the, the layout of the plan that we have in front of us, do you mind talking about how that's all going to work?
No, I don't mind at all.
The building there?
Are you kidding me? You know how many times I have to go through this stuff? So. I think you guys should have the drawings and all those things there. If you look at the drawing, you'll see the flow of traffic. And how we intend to do the queuing now. So folks would kind of come in. There's the set of double doors and there is a foyer in, in the, in the space, which we. Put there in anticipation of this year and a half ago, which is great because it allows us to number one. Check in folks through our POS system right at the gate, identify them, make sure our security is in place. And then they can't gain entry till they go through that part. Then they're cycled through the store, come back out the other side. And exit on the other side of the, of the double doors, if that makes sense. When you look at the diagrams, you can really see it.
Yeah. Okay. And then behind the showroom, it looks like there's an area called labeled for shipping. That's part of what you'll be doing or?
So shipping is illegal. You can't ship, but you, but we can deliver. So in fact, I had a long call today with our e-commerce. What will happen is similar to Instacart, we'll take in delivery orders where they have to be prepaid through ACH. Or Pendebit only. And then they'll get windows where they can schedule the delivery. And we'll see it a day early so we can lay out our delivery trace. Remember, Thrust really, this area is really tough to service. If you get a delivery in Norwich, for heaven's sakes, and. Three and JC, I mean, you're going to burn the broom, right? Just we're not, the Norwich is going to be tough. So we have to really look at that stuff and kind of order it up by zip code and regions. But that areas where we would stage those different things. Remember, per the state, we're no longer allowed to pack any products. They have to come. Pre sealed and pre packed from our cultivators.
Okay.
And we have decent relationships with all those guys as well.
All right. Great. And then how many people do you anticipate will be working in the shop every day?
Right now, we anticipate. Six. Remember, we only will allow, you know. Where we're seeing twelve, twelve people in the store at once.
Yeah.
So it's like, we'll queue another twelve and do another twelve now. Just. It's a big unknown. You know, we may see ten people a day right now and people are really happy. We may not see, you know, five times that per hour. Even still, I think we can handle those, that frequency because we saw a huge influx when Luma and different things like that were going. And it wasn't a problem.
Yeah.
And if you do the math, you're looking at a sale every three or four minutes would still get you a hundred a day.
Okay. All right. And then I think my last question, it looks like security is noted pretty heavily on. A bunch of different things in the documents. Is, is security a big concern?
Yes, not, not, not for our area. I think the folks that we are constituents are great. But for the industry as well, the state puts a huge emphasis on its security. So we'll have in upwards of eight cameras. We'll also put staff on. You know, security firms that have retired law enforcement folks and. Now it won't look like a, you know, a jail. We'll make sure they, you know, put on a nice shirt and slacks, you know, but. They really are there to help us make sure that we identify folks and we'll put those people with hosts, similar to you would see at a restaurant, right? So there's a good customer experience for folks, you know. But yeah, it's a pretty big emphasis. I, you know, we had a pretty detailed plan that we had to go through just to lay it all out and get the approval from the state.
Okay. All right, great. Anybody else? Any questions, concerns, comments? All right. All right. If there's no other questions or comments. I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing mixed use building, which is a type two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required. All right. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. And oh, one, I guess one other question. Do you anticipate this is going to be controversial and that? When we do a public hearing for this at our next meeting?
Not at all.
Lots of people are going to come out or this is just?
I don't at all. I mean, at all. All right.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at our next meeting at five twenty. All right. So goodbye, Kelly, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right. So we'll see you back at the next meeting. In February and we'll open up for a public hearing. And if anybody comes to speak for or against the project, we'll hear what they have to say and then. We'll make a ruling on the project.
Thanks for your time.
All right.
This is great.
You're welcome.
Push the button. There you go.
Thank you. All right, that concludes seeker determinations. And so now we're on to the next part of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that is planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, we ask that you also start off by stating your name and address for our records. All right. So tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant Foz Construction. Project address is forty-five Carroll Street and twenty to twenty-four Lyle Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a five story social services facility with sixty sleeping units and a childcare center in the R three multi-unit dwelling district.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carol Coppins. I live at thirteen forty-one Chestnut Ridge Road. In the town of Appalakin, in the county of Tioga. And I'm executive director for the YWCA of Binghamton and Broom County, where I've been employed for the past twenty-two years. This project is proposing utilizing property on Carroll and Lyle Street. We're calling it the intergenerational campus because we are proposing to combine low income affordable housing. With childcare than this property. So the YWCA purchased five properties last year. And they are all going to be utilized in the plan that I think you've all seen pictures of. To create this intergenerational campus. We're really excited about the fact that we're going to have sixty-eight units. Of affordable housing and ninety-eight, not units, but slots. For early childhood from infants to preschool ages. So it's, it's transformational. It's going to transform the neighborhood. And we're really excited about it. The development team consists of Foz Construction Group. Our architect is Richard Vero from OCV Architects. And Amy Laravere Associates, along with the YWCA staff. With me this evening is Carl, who is the engineer for the project from Foz Construction Group. And he's going to talk to you about more specifics, but if you have any specific questions for me, I'm here to answer them as well. So I'm going to turn this over to Carl.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Carl Guy, three, six, two, four, Wildwood Drive, Endwell. And I am the president of Foz Construction Group. And we've been working with the YWCA for over ten years on various projects, Collie Street and whatnot. And this is a great opportunity, I think, to. Redevelop part of the area on Carroll and Lyle, redevelop, redevelop the Urban League Building. And to give an opportunity to really bring a lot of life to that area. I don't know, you know, we built the pharmacy school across the street, so we're very familiar with the, the area. And so a brief synopsis of the project, it's we've, what we've changed since last time, based on some neighborhood concerns. Is we, we were asking for a height variance anyway. So to create some better side yard setbacks for, which was a concern, we did go to five stories. We're still far less than what the pharmacy school is across the street. And I think we're only asking for, if I recall, a side yard setback on the Urban League Building, just so we can create the childcare space that we need to conduct. The, the business. I think those are the two variances that we're going to be requesting of the ZBA. And it's just, like I said, it's a sixty-eight thousand, it's a sixty-eight unit building, about sixty-four thousand square feet. We also, I think in your packet, you did see that while we have twenty-three, I think twenty-three spaces of parking on site. We've been able to meet, reach an agreement with AVRE, which is just one block down the street to get forty spaces additional. And for the project and. And I think I'll answer any questions you may have, but I think that's basically outlines what we, I think we've changed. Oh, and we've also taken off. There's an existing condition wherein the existing building connects to our neighbor's building. And we had originally added some stories on that addition. We subsequently have taken them off. So that condition right there is the existing condition which we're going to leave. We're going to leave the, we're going to leave that ten, ten point whatever feet of building. We're going to cut it off and we'll repurpose that piece of building for our own, you know, in our development. But we're not going to make any changes in that area way, which we both have joint use of. Our neighbor as well as the Y is a joint easement for ingress, egress and use of the space. With that, I leave it for any questions anyone may have.
All right, Chris?
Yeah, and these questions may, I'm going to first direct these to Tito. Because there was a letter that was submitted by a neighbor. In this, for this thing. Are we allowed to address issues brought up in that letter at this point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I'm not an expert on zoning and code issues. So before I ask the applicant if they're willing to do X, Y, and Z. I'm curious to know if they're required to do X, Y, and Z. So one thing that was mentioned was that they, the plan does not currently have required handicap spot, parking spots. As provided, required by law. Are there any laws that require the applicant to have specific marked handicap parking spots?
There are. They need one handicap parking space for every twenty standard spaces, if I'm not mistaken. And I can get you that exact number.
Okay. So while you're bringing that exact number out for the applicant, would you be willing to mark the appropriate number of parking spots? As reserved for handicap?
Absolutely. Per code, we would, we would definitely do this. At this, at this level here, we're, we're not in site plan approval, but we, you know, well, yes, the answer is yes per code.
Okay. There's a second question. Another thing that was brought up was. Something about not having electronic vehicle charging stations? Are there any requirements in the code that applicants have to start having X number of electronic? Vehicle charging stations?
No, there's no requirement. There, what there is, is a bonus where if you provide. A charging station that counts as two spaces instead of one. So it's a way to reduce your parking requirement. It's an incentive to provide EV charging stations.
Okay. And then a third thing that was mentioned, there's no indication that the plans, that the current requirements for incorporating green infrastructure. Into new building projects are being met. Is there a requirement for incorporating green infrastructure? Into new building projects?
For the construction of new parking areas, you need a landscape buffer.
Okay.
But there's no, there's not necessarily a requirement for buildings themselves.
But I will interject, we do plan on providing some lead. Design in this, in this program. We just are working on that right now, but there will be some energy efficiencies designed into this building.
Those are the three things that I picked up from this letter. So thank you for the applicant for addressing those concerns.
Will that extend to the, the parking exterior area where there would be like the buffer that they were talking about?
The building, it's unique. This parking is unique because it's within the building footprint.
Okay.
So the buffer is typically used to screen parking.
Okay.
And so our parking is pretty much screened by being, by driving into the building and behind the building itself. So. Anything that comes up during the permit review and whatnot certainly will address.
Okay, thank you.
Jim? Just to build on that, you're looking at possibly lead certification?
We are not looking to lead certification just because of the cost, but we do plan in designing in. So energy efficiencies and we're working on coming up with what we can afford to put into the building. But lead certification, as you know, lead certification is well over a hundred thousand dollars to get that. So it's just a cost that. Our clientele really can't bear. And so, but we are doing energy efficiency design and that'll end up in the final design of the project.
Great. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. All right. Well, no other questions right now. So let's open the public hearing and see if there's anybody here to speak about the project and then we'll have you come back. All right. So this is the public hearing for the applicant Foz Construction. The project address is forty-five Carroll Street and twenty to twenty-four Lyle Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a five story social services facility. With sixty sleeping units and a childcare center in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, if you could please come up to our microphone. Nope. All right. And if you guys don't mind, yep. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Jeffrey Kent and I am the owner of forty-seven, fifty, fifty-two, fifty-four and fifty-six Carroll Street. Forty-seven Carroll Street is. Right next to forty-five. And thirty-four Lyle Street, which is part of this project. In fact, thirty-four Lyle Street. Has. A one-story wing that's attached to my building. There's supposed to be a ten foot. Side setback and there is none there. So this plan depicts utilizing that area. I don't know if they're going to demolish or just reconstruct. That area. But it seems to me that the toilet and the seventy-nine square foot reception area that they're. Attaching to my building in non-conformance with the R three requirement in that zone is. Not something that they really have justification seeking because there. Is a two hundred and eighty-two square foot staff lounge, which is in that area, which could easily accommodate the toilet and reception area. And a reconfigured lobby. If they need a staff lounge, there is a five hundred and forty-five square foot storage room on the first floor. Which certainly could be used as staff lounge. There's space in the basement of this building that could be used for storage. The zoning analysis is proposing. Twelve foot one side and twenty-four foot total side setbacks, but there's no set setback at all. As on to forty-seven Carroll Street. I'm glad that the applicant is addressing parking because this will be certainly a very big issue here. They're proposing sixty-eight units. This is low income housing and affordable housing, but. I have lots of low income tenants and many of them have vehicles. They're also going to be staff members that are going to be staffing the daycare center. As well as. In the plan, there are several offices, which I assume will, will be occupied by staff members. There will be visitors, there, there will be the tenants, service providers, security staff, maintenance staff. And so forth, and they will all need parking. So that's good that they're addressing that. I guess my other concern about the project, other than the setbacks and that attachment to. I guess my other concern about the project, other than the setbacks and that attachment to my building. Is that the Y WCA is proposing. To seek a variance on the height of the building. The requirement in R three zone is that the building be no more than forty-five feet in height. They're proposing a large five-story building, which uh on the plan. Will be fifty-three feet, seven inches in height, exceeding the R three requirement by eight feet, seven inches. There is no indication on the plan uh as it's submitted now. As to the height of the elevator and the stair bulkheads, which certainly will um add to the height. And it was mentioned that there'll be some energy efficiency. Factors here in terms of uh potentially solar panels, but there's nothing on the plan here, so I don't know if they're planning on. Putting them flat on the roof or on on some type of scaffolding, um but. It really needs to be clarified how high that will go. Um, there's really no basis for seeking such relief as the circumstances that the Y WCA is seeking relief for. Is uh being self-imposed, they could easily stay within legally required R three zone requirements. By constructing a four-story rather than a five-story complex, which would bring the building in at forty-four point. Forty-four feet, three inches, which would be nine inches. Um, shy of of the maximum and conforming with the R three zone. Um, that's my concern.
All right.
Appreciate your consideration.
Do, do you mind if I ask you, so normally we don't get into a dialogue with, when you're public comment, but I'm just curious. Cause it might make a difference. What is the effect on you if they go the extra eight feet? Versus if they get their variance for the height, I I get the attaching to your building, that's a weird circumstance that I think. I appreciate you came and talked because I didn't understand exactly what was happening with that and that you weren't uh for that. But uh, the height of the building, I don't understand how that affects you, I'm just curious if you would mind.
Well, the, the height of the building, there are windows on the west side of my building, several windows and um. Of course, the higher the building, that is literally ten and a half feet. From my building, uh, the less light, natural light, my uh building will have.
Okay.
And there are six apartments there, uh, you know, we have tenants living there.
All right, that makes sense then, okay, thank you. Questions? No. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else would like to speak about the project tonight? All right, seeing nobody else, we will close the public hearing. All right, and you can respond to any comments that were made?
I just wanna make a point that the one-story connection to his, Mr. Kent's building is an existing condition. We are not adding that.
Gotcha.
We're just leaving it. Okay, and the reason we went up one story was to mitigate the side, the side yard setbacks. So that it it would minimize, you know, would reduce any requests for variances along that lines. So um, we've not put any egress into that ten-foot shared easement that we have between the two buildings. Um. We've taken the dumpsters out of that area, although Mr. Kent does have a dumpster in the area. And um, so I, I think, and and the height um is is really consistent. With what the new development in that neighborhood is, is, is going on. And I misspoke, it was not the pharmacy school, we did do that, but we, it's the incubator across the street from the building. The incubator building, but that being said, I think it's consistent with the redevelopment of the downtown area.
Okay. All right. Chris, you look like you have something to ask?
Yeah, I'm not sure this is really a question or a comment or. I'm just thinking out loud here, I, I think there's, there may be a distinction between. The project being proposed here and the incubator, cause incubator. I, I guess for lack of being an architect or an engineer, is not overshadowing a neighboring building. You know, there's, there's not somebody next door who's gonna have all their light blocked out as the neighbors claiming, right?
There is no way we're gonna block the light with one story. There's no way, a four-story building versus a five-story building is not gonna make that. Um, a hole in the ground.
Um, let me ask this, well, yeah, I'm not an engineer, have you performed a light analysis? I know you've had that done in other projects. And shade analysis, is that, is that something you've done? I don't want to suggest you're just talking out of your backside, but have you done that to? Be, be confident that it's not gonna?
There are three sides of that building that are wide open to natural light. We're talking one side. So three sides of that shared alleyway are open to natural light flowing in out of that area. So we're not, we're not talking where I'm building up, where originally we did have the. One-story addition did go up five stories and that would have been a problem and we realized that, so we took that out. But uh, we're talking a building, um, that's only, that's one side, but the other sides are open. To whatever natural light is getting in there now.
Stuff, comment to Chris, perhaps I'm looking at the drawing, see the north arrow? On the bottom there, the, the sun comes up. And subtle from the east and it, it sets in the west, that arrow is like on a little incline. So the sun would come up this way and set that way, so that's how you could gauge the effect. And the sun will be in the south. Because where we are, forty something north latitude. That's, I'm trying to think through that. I don't, you know, that's, I'm just using that little. Thinking of um, which way is the sun path, it's probably down this way, coming this way and all dropping. Certainly anything on the north side. Is it gonna be affected to where we are, which some will never be done. North. So, I'm just.
Really happened, did you, did you want to address the concerns that were raised about? And I'm gonna, not having this letter memorized, uh, issues with the elevator shaft and the stairwells and how that may be. Higher or something?
I don't think that the elevator shaft or the stairwells are um impacting the uh average height of the building. They're simply incidental and uh, they're incidental to the design of the building to allow roof access and elevator hoistway.
And somewhere list how, not the average height, but what the. Ultimate extreme height would be of those two. Parts of the building, the elevator shaft and the stairwell? I mean, again, the average.
Let me ask a question to Tito, do they fact, do the, do the, do the stairwells, uh, there's one stair that goes to the roof, not two. And there's the elevator um shaft that has to go up, I believe, uh, four feet in order to get the clearance. But I'm not sure they're calculated in the height of the roof.
I'm double checking that, the, the parapet wall does count, will they be higher than the parapet wall, possibly?
The stairwell maybe.
Okay.
Uh, but the elevator would be close?
It, I, I'm gonna double check that right now, there are sort of uh accessory uh. Or incidental projections from the roof that are not counted in the official calculation of the height. Um. You can, you're entitled as a planning commissioner to ask about that and what that'll look like. Um, but when it comes time to seek the height variance. They may not need to ask for permission to, to go that high with those particular. Items, the stairwell and the uh elevator shaft, um, but let me double check that.
That's fine, I mean, the reason I'm asking is I, you know, I'm, the little I know from when, when buildings are, you know, competing, who's gonna be the tallest building in the world, there's, you know. Are we counting the antennas, which are five thousand feet tall, I mean, so if the neighbor's concern is building height. Regardless of what the legal definition of what's a legal height is, if there's fifty feet of additional stuff causing shadows, I think that's something we need to. Consider.
Gotcha.
I think where the elevator for sure is located, that's like in the middle of the building, which won't even be seen by anybody at a grade level.
Just to answer a question from before, we used to have a specific requirement for number, uh proportion of spaces that had to be handicap accessible. We took that out and just made it that they have to follow if federal and state guidelines. Um, and then the other thing I want to clarify is that the existing attached portion is non-conforming. But the way that, that the city um deals with non-conforming issues is. If they're not making it more non-conforming. Then it can stay as is, so it's already attached, they're not making it closer to the neighboring building, they're not increasing the mass of that attached portion. Then they don't need a variance for that, for that, that, that's, that's considered legal non-conforming.
So in answer to your question, I just wanna let you know. Here's Mr. Kent's building, right here. Here's a stair in the middle of our building. Here, here is the elevator on the farthest, one of the farthest points from Mr. Kent's building. And the other stairwell is at the farthest point away from his building. There, there's no way anything above that, on those, that they're gonna create any projection of shadows on the uh, on his building at all.
If it's helpful, I pulled up on my screen and any of the commissioners or the applicant or Mr. Kent are welcome to look at it, but this is an overhead. Google shot, looks like it was taken probably in the afternoon. Sometime early spring, because the trees aren't sprouting, the grass is green, doesn't have a date on it, so I don't know exactly when it was, but this is. Close thing we can have to show what the sun is doing with respect to shadows in that location.
All right, any other questions, concerns? Uh, just out of curiosity. From the history of the buildings, at some point, did both of these buildings belong to the same person or how did the? How did a building get attached to another building on a separate property?
I don't know that, but if you look around the city of Binghamton, you're gonna find a lot of buildings that have zero lotlines. Right now, if you go down Shango Street or any of those streets, is, I've, I've worked on a lot of these buildings. They're just, it's the way it was constructed, vec and whenever they did it, but there are a lot of zero, zero outlines.
All right.
Common walls.
And then you've, you've referred to an easement of some sort a couple of times, what is the, what are the details of that?
The question Mr. Kent brought up, we originally, in our original plan, had a four-story building and we had placed dumpsters in the. Common easement that they, he shares and we share on that ten and a half foot wide piece. Um, we took the dumpsters out, uh, we, we took all the additional stories off the existing condition where it was attached to the building. To uh, remove the issue of concern he had with natural light.
Gotcha.
And um, and so that easement and legally, we both have a right to cross.
All right.
That's a shared easement.
All right. Okay, and your dumpsters moved to a new location, where is that?
Dumpsters are moved to the west side of the building, if you look at the end of the building on the site plan.
Yep.
They're on the west, western portion of the building.
Gotcha. All right, and is there, there's an existing curb cut there already to access those, or do you have to do new, new work to put those in there?
I'll, I'll, I'll speak for Richard, uh, there, he's, he's, he's been down to the site, he's thinking there's an existing driveway there, curb cut.
All right.
Otherwise, we will put a curb cut in.
Okay. And the, and the trash, it's uh screened, it's inside a fence?
Yeah, yes, we have, our, our dumpsters have been, are screened.
Perfect, all right.
If you look at the elevation, we, there's a fence there, and actually we put a fence across the shared easement, but we'd have to talk to Mr. Kent about that, just to keep people from dumping trash. But it obviously would have gates on it.
Gotcha.
We, we did put a fence for screening.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, if there's no other questions or comments, um, all right, so I'll make a motion. Oh, wait, Tito, does this, this is gonna require some variances?
Yes, and so they're scheduled to appear uh next Tuesday.
Do we have to wait or can we do a conditional?
It's not a type one action, so you do not need the ZBA to conclude what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, but if you were to vote tonight, it would be contingent on the ZBA approving the variances.
Okay, just checking, cause this, I think this was a type one action. Cause it was more than fifty units.
Across the street from the park, that's correct. So what you would have to do then is conclude seeker, so that the ZBA can then vote.
Okay.
So you can go that far tonight.
All right, seeker. Include seeker, but don't uh rule on the site plan until after they've granted their variances or denied them.
Actually, you can conclude seeker and vote contingent on ZBA approval.
Okay.
The ZBA wouldn't be able to act before you, but you can act before the ZBA.
Perfect, all right. All right, so at our last meeting, for the last time you were in, we determined that this was a type one action under seeker, and so. I will make a. Motion that this is a negative declaration uh for seeker review based on the following. Uh, impact on land, the proposed action involves construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Uh, yes, but it'll have a small or no impact to that. Uh, impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms. On the site, no. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, uh, no. Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater. Or an aquifer, uh, no. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding, no. Impact, impact on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source, no. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna, uh, no. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources, no. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp, sharp contrast. To current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource, no. Impact on historic or archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Uh, I don't believe so, no. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource. As designated in any adopted municipal open space plan, uh, no. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, no. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, uh, no. Impact on energy, energy, the proposed action may result in an increase in the use of any form of energy. Uh, yes, but it will have no or small impact based on that use. Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Uh, yes, but it'll have minimal or no impact in terms of environmental significance. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants, uh, no. Consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Uh, no, it is consistent with community plans. Consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character, uh, no, it is consistent with the. Existing community character. All right, to, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker review. Is there a second? All right, second by Joe, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right, and I'll make a motion. That the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met conditional. On the applicant receiving the required zoning variances. And that the ultimate plan does include handicap spaces that meet code requirements. All right, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's four in favor, all opposed, and one opposed. All right, that's a four to one ruling.
That, that carries.
All right, that carries. All right. You're welcome. Good luck with your zoning variances. All right. All right. Onto our next public hearing and final deliberation. Uh, so our next public hearing is for the applicant Eagle Properties LLC. Project address is one thirty-one Holly Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a, an existing two-story building into a congregate living facility with six sleeping units. In the R three multi-unit dwelling district.
Jeffrey Smith, Chanis and Anderson Architects, thirty-one Front Street, Binghamton, New York, one three nine zero five.
Welcome back.
Thanks. I didn't speak much last time, but uh Kyle is not feeling well today, so I figured we wouldn't expose you all to him. Um, an existing single-family residence that has been changed, previous owner into six bedrooms, currently legally shown as a four-bedroom. Uh, I may get legal six-bedroom in the zoning allowed. Um, the site unfortunately has been paved previously as well. Plenty of parking. Uh, last time we could discuss a little bit garbage. Should, should we see if you have any more uh comments on that? Otherwise, no changes to the building.
Can you just speak into the mic for, for the purposes of the recording? We can all hear you, but, but the computer won't pick it up.
That's not, alright. I guess I'll have to sit down then. Jeffrey Smith, Chanis and Anderson Architects, thirty-one Front Street, Binghamton, New York, one three nine zero five, representing the, the property. Uh, on Holly Street. Uh, it's an existing single-family residence that is listed as a four-bedroom. In the city of Binghamton records. Uh, the new owners want to make it legal as a six-bedroom. Which it currently exists now.
All right. Any questions before we open a public hearing? So it's pretty straightforward. All right, well, let's do the public hearing and see if there's anybody here to speak about the project. So this is the public hearing for the applicant. Eagle Properties LLC. Project address is one thirty-one Holly Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing two-story building into a congregate living facility with six sleeping units in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anyone who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right, I think seeing as how there's only one person in the crowd and I think we'll say that nobody's here to speak about this and we'll close the public hearing. All right. Any last questions, comments, concerns about this project? All right, seeing none. Uh, we determined that this was a type two action at our last meeting. So no further environmental review is required under seeker. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for a site plan review and special use permit have been met. All right, seconded by Chris, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Could I say something else about, I've been taking notes in the previous kind of uh project that was presented here earlier? And I'm hoping whatever I say doesn't affect that project at all. I don't know if I want to. Not speaking, all right, maybe I should be quiet. We'll, we'll talk offwards. Uh, so there were some good points made and some good comments made. And a lot of those comments are things that design professionals should have answered in the submission, you know, already. Whether it's accessible parking, whether it's height of the building and that sort of thing. Um, and we'll, we'll talk about that otherwise.
All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. Uh, now we're on to other business where we have an extension for two hundred Court Street.
Yep, so uh, the applicant for two hundred Court Street is looking for a twelve-month extension to their uh. Planning commission approval, which was granted. Uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so it's set to expire. They're not quite ready to apply for building permits because they're waiting for state and federal. Review of their, of their grant funded project. Um, and they're still working through that with the National Park Service. So they're asking for a twelve-month extension. Um, and they expect to be able to submit permit applications in July. Uh, but they're asking for twelve months to have enough cushion. And as a reminder, um, this is the rehabilitation of the shelter workshop building into a hundred and ten. Total units, um, including a three-story addition on the rear of that building.
All right, anybody opposed to a twelve-month extension? All right. Anybody want to make a motion? All right. All right, it's Steve's first motion, uh, motion for an extension of twelve months. All right, motion by Steve. Seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right, um. Any other business, Chris?
Um, yeah, just to go back to one of the topics from the um. Forty-five Carroll Street project about electronic vehicles. Tito, is it possible to, one, email to me whatever the current bonus points are? And I do wonder if, if we, as possibly as a planning commission should have some longer-term thoughts about this. The reason I ask is that New York State in all of its wisdom has passed a law that by twenty thirty-five. Combustion vehicles can't be sold in New York State anymore to try to drive everybody to an electronic uh vehicle. Purchasing. So I'm curious what we should be considering as far as a city. To make sure that we're as helpful as possible to that new twenty thirty-five reality, whether it's making sure our city vehicles. But also making sure that our residents have appropriate access because. Bless the one unnamed business up there on Upper Front Street that's got, you know, fourteen Teslas. We, there's got to be other options in town. People go get electronic charging. For their vehicles, if that's what we're going to be looking at it.
Right.
January first, twenty thirty-five.
Yeah, that, that was the idea was to. Not require it. Um, the mayor at the time didn't think it was appropriate to make that a requirement, but he wanted to sort of incentivize it to start building that infrastructure. Um, because we don't, we don't have a ton of charging stations. So um, are, are you suggesting that? That it should become a requirement for certain sites of project or something like that?
I don't know if I want to say that, but I think it's, it's, I think a discussion about what we can look at, what options would be. I, I'm hesitant about putting additional burdens, because I know EV charging stations are very expensive. And I don't want to be overly burdensome, but if there's things we should be looking at, um, I'm assuming does, does. Planning and code have some sort of a map of where EV charging stations currently exist in the city?
We don't have that right now, but we can create that.
Okay.
We can make that. Um, but. Yeah, thirty-three South Wash. There's one at Rec Park. But what, what I will say is that the, the planning commission. Can ask for, for that sort of thing. You can add for that on a site plan. Um, and it is sort of burdensome, but in certain cases it would be justified, like for example. If somebody's building a very large project with a hundred uh space surface parking lot. That has a, with storm and stuff like that. So you can say this is uh too much paved area. We want you to reduce it. And to facilitate you reducing that, you should include EV protection so that you don't then, then need a variance. Because you're not providing enough parking. So you can sort of, I think there are certain projects where you can ask for that.
Like I know, Nick, a lot of times you've asked about bike racks and not that there's a specific zoning or code requirement for bike racks, but just. Something we're trying to be is making a good community.
Yeah, on that, Chris, on that line and. In general, the question about lead that I brought up, there's a scoring sheet for lead buildings that you could get. Gold, platinum, silver classification. And you get points for charging, you get points for bike racks. But even though um, someone may not want to go for lead certification. There might be no um harm in having that as part of an application form where people just check off what things they're doing for lead. And submit it and they're not going for the formal hundred thousand dollar license, but. It'd be a criteria to get to see that you have all the proper landscaping bike racks. Uh, uh, charging station. You know, just as a checklist to go along.
Yeah, that's something that could be done as an incentive. How we have the EV charging stations now, we could take some of those other criteria and give a bonus in. Whatever requirement, you know. Whatever might, might be burdensome, reduced parking requirement or something like that.
I thought it was something I was starting thinking about larger term now, not in twenty thirty-four.
Yeah, uh, the, we have a meeting on Thursday at the university to start talking about our plan for addressing that requirement. Is all fleet vehicles on campus have to switch over by then too. So we're going to need to make some plans, so. Maybe we'll have some ideas by the next meeting. For the city too. All right. Uh, Tito, I have a question about the project at the corner of Floral Ave and Main Street. It was the convenience store. They were supposed to put up uh blockades to pre- uh prevent parking. That backs out onto the street. Uh, they, they haven't and I watched somebody almost get run over by a car. Uh, over the break, the holiday break here. Just curious if they're operating that as the convenience store already and, and why they haven't put up there.
It does appear that they are operating, so we'll have to get in touch with them about, about that.
I don't want to cause more work for you, but. It was, it was a close call. Oh, sorry, Greg.
On a, on a similar note, I'm curious about, um, I heard that our friends up around Upper Front Street were, were decorating one of the records with a Merry Christmas Nick. How's that going with the, the ever-increasing fleet of records?
Yeah, uh, our zoning officer just got back, so we'll uh. We'll have to get on his list. You save, yeah. Yeah.
All right, and then one last question, uh. I think, did we ever approve the Galaxy Brewing moving to Clinton Street and what ultimately wound up happening with that?
That did get approved. Uh, there was an issue. Um, between the seller and buyer.
Okay, so.
Yeah, there was, there's a bunch of stuff going on there. Um, between those parties, but. Um, as far as the city is concerned, it was good to go.
Okay, alright. All right. Any other questions, Steve? Good question.
At the clerk's office, there's a, there's something you have to sign. Yep. Get in touch about that.
Alright. What's that? How was it? Was the first meeting painless? All right. Will you come back or? Yeah. Uh, well, do we want to adjourn? Yeah, and then Greg can fill us in. All right, motion to adjourn, second by everybody, all in favor? Everybody, five to zero. All right, meeting adjourned.